I'd like to open up. All right, Commissioner's meeting number thirty-two. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Cheers when they get done. Isn't it funny how everybody goes to the back row?
Nobody's in the front row.
Ed can hear better and tape better, so he gets in front. Interesting. See, we all have our blue.
Yeah.
You have it on your skirt. Jimmy's purple. All right, all good. All right, we'll open the meeting up with public comments. If anyone has anything they'd like to address the board with, we ask them to come up to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, so we do things legally. Anyone like to address the public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of Board meeting number thirty-one from Thursday, August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and approval of bills for payment. Do I have a motion?
So move?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay. Travels, lead-based.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a conference of the National Lead and Healthy Housing Grantees in Philadelphia, October seventeenth to the twentieth. Estimated amount, thirty-six hundred for Dan and myself.
Thank you, Phil. Motion.
Motion to approve travels to A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Agreements, engineers.
Commissioners, letter A is an agreement with TSI Western Star. These are for repairs to vehicle number five thirty-four in the estimated amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars, thirty cents, non-general funds. And letter B is agreements with NAPA Development for the purchase of real property needed for the Western Reserve Road widening project, which is from Market to South Avenue, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, three hundred, ten dollars. These are also non-general funds.
Okay, jobs and family. Audrey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Audrey. Good morning, Nancy, Jim. Letter C, job and family service amendment number three with my cap for home and administrative services in the additional amount of four hundred thousand dollars. This is non-general. Letter D, job and family service amendment number one with my cap to extend the workforce program until November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, at no change in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand, thirty-four dollars. Non-general.
Okay, thank you. Lead-based.
The letter E is an agreement with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes work at thirty-six, seventy-six Powersway, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, sixty-five dollars, non-general. And F is an agreement with W and W Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes work, two fifty, twenty-five, seventy-four East Midlothian, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars, also non-general.
Thank you. Sanitary.
Commissioners, letter G is an agreement with Truck Specialists, Inc. for repairs to sanitary vehicle S thirty-five, which is one of the Western Star trucks, in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred, thirty-two dollars, seventy-seven cents. These are non-general funds. And letter H is an agreement with Ohio Edison for a line extension for the Five Points Pump Station project. This is improvement number four ninety, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred, forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents, also non-general funds.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff's Department, Joe.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioner's I is an agreement with TenLink LTD for the purchase of software license in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred, twenty-seven dollars, fourteen cents, and it's non-general.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Motion.
Motion to approve agreements, letters A through I.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Change orders, lead-based.
This is a change order, number one, with American Pinnacle Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes work at seven oh eight Cassius, in the amount of one thousand, four hundred, twenty-five dollars, non-general.
Thank you, Phil. O M B grants.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a final change order with RT Vernal for the Boorman Township Meadowbrook Improvement Project. It is a decrease in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents, non-general.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve change orders.
Motion to approve change orders, A and B.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion to approve, approve resolutions, number one, additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, O M B resolutions.
Commissioners, item A is a resolution approving the amendment and expenditures with the following agencies funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Educational Services Center for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred, seventy-six dollars, for YMCA of Youngstown, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and for Emergency Management Agency, eight hundred thousand dollars. Item B is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with the following township and the county engineer for the allocation of road and infrastructure sales tax project for Poland Township, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars, and I don't know if the Commissioners would do that, but see.
Yes, yes. Okay, on C, a resolution to appoint an acting county clerk of courts under the Ohio Revised Code, section three oh five point oh two, to fill the vacancy due to the anticipated retirement of Mahoning County Clerk of Courts Anthony Vivo, effective August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Wow. I don't know. I don't know if we should. Does that mean we have to accept his retirement?
Thought we were going to extend.
Can we?
Can he give you two more months?
Two more years, Tony.
Anticipated? Anticipated. Well, you know, stranger things have happened. You know, stranger things have happened. Okay, do I have a motion?
No.
What?
Keep going down. You gotta keep.
Oh, you gotta keep going? What do you mean?
You got all these other ones to do.
Well, I know.
Oh, you want to put the person on?
No.
Want to put the person on now?
Yeah.
Just do C.
Okay, go ahead. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve. Appoint Scott Grossen as temporary acting clerk of the Mahoning County Clerk of Courts Office, effective as of today.
No, 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 no.
August twenty-seventh. August twenty-seventh.
I can go home?
I saw you sweating over there.
Started.
Congratulations.
Okay, second.
I just want to thank the Commissioners, and I'm truly humbled for the appointment. It's totally unexpected. I just want to say, you know, for the first few weeks here during this transition period, my goal was just to maintain continuity in the office, so our office can continue to provide services for the taxpayers, for the courts we serve, ensure the issuance of auto titles for the dealers and for the general public. And I just want to acknowledge our awesome staff, sixty-plus employees, and each perform an important role every day of the week. So, again, thank you for your confidence in our offices as we go through this transitional period.
So, can we vote on that in and of itself, and then we can do?
Carol did a second already.
Yeah.
I seconded.
Let's have a roll call on C.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay, then we will move on down to D. Commissioners, resolution changing the county seat from the Commissioners' hearing room to the Ohio State Extension Office at four ninety South Broad Street, Campford, Ohio, on Thursday, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, to be held at nine AM. And that is in honor of going over across the street and opening up to Canfield Fair. So. All right, we will move on to E. E M A, O M B. Anna? No, Chief, Robin.
I'll take that. This is just an oversight on the previous resolution, that's all, adding Steve Sakely to the local emergency planning committee.
Wow, I mean, that was a pretty, pretty bad one to omit. All right. Jobs and family. Audrey.
Yes. Letter F, job and family service. This is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Workforce Development Board Incorporated for the local workforce area seventeen workforce development system in the amount of eleven thousand, three hundred, twenty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Letter G, job and family services, resolution approving the unpaid leave of absence for one employee of the department.
Okay.
Thank you.
O M B grants.
Item H, item H is a resolution approving the sponsorship act of the Youngstown Business Incubator in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, sanitary.
Commissioners, letter I is a resolution certifying to the county auditor collection upon the real property tax list and duplicate certain sewer and water service charge delinquencies. This is in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, sections sixty-one, seventeen oh two and sixty-one oh three dot oh two. And letter J is a resolution authorizing the President of the Board to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Grant Program through the Ohio Department of Development and to execute contracts as required.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff's Department, Joe.
Commissioner K is a resolution submitting an application to the Attorney General for the law enforcement inversion program grant to implement the quick response team in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars with no match required.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, letters A through K.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermejo Baguetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Trafficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes. Okay. Well, Tony Vivo, August twenty-seventh. My goodness. Tony, how many years have you been serving the Mahoning County residents as their clerk of courts?
Well, my total service is forty-one point one two three six years.
Wow. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have expected to say anything different.
I've been looking at my PR stuff lately to make sure they got it right, but, no, just over almost thirty years.
You want to do that now, or should we let?
We come up here because we want to get you on the cameras. Back there, you're hidden from the cameras.
Oh, gotcha.
So if you come up to the podium, that way everybody else can see you on your.
Yeah, come up here so we could throw stuff at you. Looking pretty.
Go to the lectern.
Yes, you can.
You're actually looking pretty sharp today, by me.
Well, I don't, I don't think I've ever wore this tie. I wanted to wear gray for the Raiders, so sorry. Hello.
So forty-one years in the clerk's office, how many years have you been the clerk of courts?
Well, ironically, the last time that I was down here was ninety-four, when, after my father passed away, and the Commissioners at the time appointed me as a temporary clerk, just like Scott Grossen did today. So, so I think December of ninety-four is when I took office officially, after the Board of Elections verified the results. So, so you guys figure that out, ninety-four, December ninety-four till now, it's always thirty years.
Twenty-nine years, yeah, twenty-nine years.
As a matter of fact, in this office, my first, I first started in the summer of seventy-six, before I started my career at Ohio University, and this room was actually the file room. There was old files, and that was the first thing I did, sent me down here to put files away. In this room here, this is the file room for the clerk's office.
It's a Commissioner's office there.
Right, and then, right, that should be top, Commissioners stole that office, they stole this office. Thanks a lot, okay?
I'm remembering that.
That's why I stayed in office so long, so you wouldn't steal my office.
So we kept, we kept your office upstairs.
Too funny, Tony.
But I've been here, I've seen a lot of, the sad thing is, I've seen a lot of good people pass away, especially people that trained me. There's not too many of them left, but, but it's been, it's been great, it's been fun. And I think what I'm going to miss the most is the people in this courthouse.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're hard workers and.
But you could always come back and visit.
Yes, I can. And I'll take a few weeks off.
That seemed like a no to me.
Well, I'm going to, it's time for somebody else, and, and the Democratic Party will have someone, put in somebody here shortly with a vote. And I would acknowledge that my cousin Jimmy's here today, who's one of the applicants. Very supportive. Matter of fact, I remember my first election, Jimmy drove me around to the different precincts, so he was very helpful back then. But, yeah, I'm truly going to miss the quality people that work in the county, especially in the courthouse, okay? Look at Jim Fortunato and just, I mean, you can't get this guy's DQ all the way. I told him, he's worried about a primary, I said, you should be a model, that's what he should be. And I see Jerry Trudy, I got to mention Jerry, the media's been very nice to me over the years, great relationship, Ed. A short time we've got to know each other, but, but you guys, there's a lot of quality people that work here in this courthouse, and hate to see public employees, government employees be, be ripped and ranked on so often, and they have no clue the quality people we have in this courthouse, including you three Commissioners, Nancy, you know, and Audrey, I mean, I can't go on and on about the job you've done for the county's budget director, but I'm going to miss you all.
Yeah. I'll tell you, you have an amazing staff, you know, with Kathy and Scott, you know, leading the way, I mean, just, you know, it's, it's always, you know, been my feeling, as I'm sure you've proven to be, is to surround yourself with good people, you know, because they, they make it, what do they say, you know, the tide raises all boats, you know, and.
And the bottom line is, without my staff, I'm nothing, okay? I'm just, I'm nothing. And, you know, it's Sam, stand up, my office manager Sammy, stand up, you know Scott Grossen, stand up Scott, and then, last but not least, Kathy and Naval, stand up. Without these three people.
Yeah.
I've had some health issues, and they really, they really helped me, and I love them, all three of them, but, you know.
Well, one thing I'm looking forward to is the return of Champ Summers to the radio, so that maybe I can.
I'm glad you brought that up, because the Tigers won the season series against the Guardians this year, first time since two thousand.
I don't know what the Guardians are. My Cleveland Indians never lost, never lost the series to the Tigers. I don't know what a Guardian is.
Sparky Anderson.
I don't know. He used to smoke in the dugout, I used to love watching him.
But everyone knows that sports is a big part of my life, and I'm, I'm not embarrassed to say, I'm a Detroit fan from the sixty-eight World Series. My older sister grew up in the Bay Area, so I like Oakland and Detroit teams. And never been fans of Pittsburgh and Cleveland, sorry, but I love Y S U, though, I'll tell you that right now.
You might be on the radio.
Yeah. Yeah, Champ Summers is going to be reborn, I guess, or born again, so to speak, but.
Well, you don't have to hide anymore, you could be Tony Vivo on the radio.
Tony Vivo is boring, Champ Summers is exciting. Let's be honest, but, yeah, I.
Give us an example.
Uh, no. But, because if I start talking sports, we'll be here for six hours.
You're right about that.
Because I love to talk sports, as you know.
You know, Chris Sammarone on the radio, yourself, I mean, you know, such great insight, because you're, you know what, nothing brings it home better than home cooking from the people that are announcing, you know?
Right, and we, we're blessed to have some great sports media people in this town, and I loved radio until they started doing podcasts, that's when I got scared, when they put my face on the, on the TV like that. But it's, it's always been a hobby of mine, and I'm going to continue, because I do have a broadcasting degree from one of the finest broadcasting schools in the country, Ohio University, go Bobcats.
Bobcats.
But, yeah, it's been fun, and, but you know what, this county's going to keep on going strong with the leadership and the people we have in the courthouse. This county's in, the taxpayers have to understand they're in great shape, what we have going here.
We've got, we've got something we want to give to you. Anthony.
Now, is it, is it over, over sixty dollars, because I have to put on my ethics report?
Basketball.
Is it over sixty?
Yeah, sixty now.
Hey, I picked it up.
In fact, that's the only thing.
They didn't want me to give you the diamonds, so I should go get some.
I'm done with everything, except the ethics report I got to do next year, so I hope someone reminds me about that. My goodness. You know what's so funny? I know. You know what's so funny about this? I tried to take a picture of this from the ground with my camera, and I couldn't because it was so high up, and now you're giving me, look at this, isn't this beautiful?
It's nice.
This is a rendering of our statute, which Jimmy and I went over, and it's done locally. And so we thought that would be for, if you were to put.
That's beautiful.
I've known you for how many years? Why do you, Dad? That's, I don't want to date myself.
Is that it? Can I go home?
You have to ask God, you can't.
Yeah, but thanks very much, everybody.
I'm going to give you the bags.
Yeah.
You give him the bags?
Yeah. The bag is back.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, here, Tony. Use this.
Yeah.
I was trying to take a picture of this the other day, but I just couldn't do it for me.
It's your drone.
How about, anybody from the staff? Where did Kathy go? Kathy, would you like to say something? Let's put the podium back.
Did you put the podium back?
Yeah. Kathy?
Kathy.
Go to Scott, and then I'll go.
Go ahead.
Come on up here, Scott, since you're going to be our active.
People want to see you.
Is he better looking than I am?
Not really.
I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work for Tony for over twenty-three years. Going to miss him a lot, as my mentor, but also as my golf instructor. I just wish you all the best, Tony, in your retirements. That's about all, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
It was December fourth, nineteen ninety-four, because we started together, and that's a long time. I've been, I've been an attorney for thirty-eight years, and I have to tell you that sometimes, and I'm sure others can relate to this, the world maybe was, was tough on women when they came into roles that had been traditionally male-dominated roles. I have never been treated, Tony, you have always treated me with respect. And as a woman, I can't express my gratitude for your support, for your compassion, and you did that with every member of our staff. Our staff is a reflection of the community that we serve. It is a diverse staff, because you felt always that that would be the best team. The values of our office are your values. And on behalf of the citizens of Mahoning County, thank you, God bless you, thank you.
I say this quite often, that I actually, after the primary election, I called Tim Welsh, Kathy's husband, and I said, you know what, I really want to hire Kathy as my chief deputy. That was my first hire, I had the number one pick in the draft, and I should be the manager of the year. You know, we talk a lot about my father, but when you talk about women, I got to mention my mother.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my God. Trailblazer.
Yep.
She was a great role model. Tricia.
The book was amazing, your mom was amazing, just.
And she could speak on anything.
Yep.
I could never win an argument with her. I'd say, you know what, I had this one. Ten minutes later, I was crying, bawling, and I was like, you're right, Mom, you're right. And she taught me so much, especially how to handle women. I have, I have five sisters, too, so that's. But, yeah, my mom was.
She taught you very well on that note.
Yes.
Sam, would you respect?
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't even follow that.
Sam's Italian.
I'm the newbie, I have to keep the Italian name in the department, so, but I, oh, it's, it's, I'm a newbie there, I'm just, you know, it was a pleasure to work with Tony for the time that I've been there. Loved some of the visits in his office, and sometimes you couldn't pull away, but you did, you were enthralled by the knowledge that this man has.
Oh, my goodness, you're not kidding.
It'll be, it's a great loss for our, for our department, but I look forward to the future.
Excellent. Gina, Jake?
Oh, sure, sure. You know, I've worked with Tony and his office staff for the entire time that I've been at the prosecutor's office since two thousand and five, and we've had, we've had some, we've had some issues, you know, we've had some employment, we handled employment for you, we've always handled your contracts, we've seen some updates with Court View, you know, they've always been pioneers in technology, and, you know, the office has been run in a superb manner. Tony and his staff has done just an amazing job, and Scott, I've worked with Scott for many years as well. The county would be in good hands until a formal appointment is made. So, you know, Tony, on behalf of myself and my office, we wish you the best of luck. You know, enjoy the retirement, maybe you'll see some of those other retirees from Mahoning County floating around out there, maybe some are on their motorcycles. Some might be on their motorcycles, but, yeah, it's a well-deserved, well-deserved honor and time. You've served your, you've served the public well, we're very, we were very fortunate to have you, and, you know, enjoy, enjoy retirement, and do what you like to do, and, you know, we wish you the best.
And good luck to you.
Aw, thank you very much.
Pat, you're still online, Pat, anybody on, online, Pat, would you like to make any comments? Can you hear us?
I think I'm overrated.
Anyone, anyone else? Any department heads selected?
I would.
Yeah, please.
I would, too.
I wanted to just say, Tony, thank you. It's been, you know, when the county was dealing with some really shortfalls and dealing with things, your office was very supportive and using other resources, things like that, to balance out and help us, as with all the other elected officials. This group of elected officials have worked so well together and been able to deal with the highs and the lows of the county, and that's why we are where we are, because we do have good elected officials that know when it gets tough, they know how to work together and do what's best for this county, to make sure services are being delivered and that the citizens are not missing a beat. So even though we've gone through some struggles to get to where we are now, our citizens have never made a beat, because we have officials like you, like the Commissioners and all the other officials that have worked through that process, so thank you.
Well, I, I'll make a confession, I've been telling all my friends that I hired you. That's how awesome you've been, Audrey, and I appreciate everything.
It takes leadership from the top before the rest of us can do anything, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tony, what can I say? Forty-one years is a, is a very long time.
Twenty-one, two, five.
Got to add that extra, that's a couple hundred dollars difference. You know, your parents are definitely looking down as to how well that you have handled yourself, and that you have kept the Vivo name where it belongs, in the beautiful spotlight that you have brought to this institution. And I have to say that your staff are some of the most nicest and friendliest people that I have met in my career in government, you being number one. that I have met in my career in government, you being number one. You know, there are a lot of people who will hold offices that, uh, get a little bit arrogant once in a while, but you never had that arrogance. You were always nice to me, and if you remember, when I first ran, I come to see you in your office, and you actually saw me, nobody else would talk to me, but you opened your door to me and sat me down, and we had about an hour's conversation, I'll never forget that. And my father and your father go way back, God knows how many years. And his dad was one of the greatest people that you'd ever wanna meet, he always dressed, he had them shoes shining, I could picture Mr. Viva, uh, especially later in life when he would dye his hair or look a little red. My dad used to go out and tease him about that, and my dad had to start dying his hair. So I, I just wanna say that you've left a beautiful legacy, and, uh, your knowledge of the position and how you treat people and how nice you are and your staff wins me over all day long. And the quality of office holder that you are should set an example for all of us. And I'm gonna miss you, and again, I wanna commend you on a wonderful staff, Scott, congratulations, Kathy, everybody has done an exceptional job. And you gotta say this about Tony, anytime he would come in for union negotiations, he made it easy, there was no hollering, no pounding on the table, no screaming, none of that. He did what he had to do to take care of his staff, but also to work with us, uh, and our office as well. So I wanna thank you for all those wonderful years, and I'm sure I'll see you around, but I'm gonna miss you a lot.
Well, quick story, um, when I was running for office way back when, um, you were, I think I might have told you, you were at a place, wedding in life or something, and someone said something negative about me, and you corrected them, because that person told me that, and said that, no, Tony's a good guy, vote for him, he's, he'll be a good clerk, and I'll never forget that.
Thank you for saying that.
Commissioner, uh, and as far as my dad, my dad was, he had a thousand suits, he looked wonderful, and I am the complete opposite. I am the bum on mystery.
I'm glad you said that.
For no reason, he loved to dress up, I don't like to dress up, so there's something that separates us, you know, during their fashion line. He was a remarkable, very handsome, very, very, uh, beloved man, who was involved in everything. And, you know, what I remember when I was administrator is that someone would come over and said, Mr. Viva, I need your help, I gotta get a birth certificate, and, you know, normally you'd just say, well, here's the number, call that, no, he would walk them over to City Hall, or he would walk them over to this department. That's the type of, uh, person my dad was, and I learned a lot. And every time someone comes to my office that obviously is either elderly or looking for help, I learned from my dad to do whatever you can to help that person, and that's been kind of, uh, my theme throughout the years I served.
Your dad was always a hit when he'd come out to my dad's trucking business, he would pull in, he'd have a suit on, and everybody would gather around, is that Mr. Viva? Is that Mr. Viva? So I just want you to know.
He was the only guy to get out.
There you go.
He was a remarkable person, thank you very much, he was kind words.
Carol?
Well, I echo what Anthony and Dave said, and I do know you from the first day you started to work, because I was across the hall at the Board of Elections, and when your dad, you know, was it there, and you took over for a short period, and then we went through the election, you were, you were the favorite son of some of us that were at that Board of Elections at that time, I've got to tell you that. But your dad, I remember him, because in the seventies, when I started, he and my dad had the picnic, and I tell this to everybody, at Idora Park. Do you remember those picnics? Idora Park picnics, all the hot dogs, the buns, those two guys got everything donated, orange drink, the whole nine yards. And you, myself, my brother, all the kids of those guys had to work. We worked, we didn't get to go on the rides and have fun, but I can remember that. And I've got to tell you, Anthony, he was still dressed up there. I mean, I couldn't believe it, he didn't have a tie, but he had, my father would say, Tony, sport coat, shiny shoes, where's your work clothes? I'm a workin' this. But, I mean, that, that was a team. And I think we lost that along the way, but I also think that we brought it back, and that's where we are now. Your leadership, our commissioners, the prosecutors, and every other elected official, I think we brought that back to Mahoning County, where we are that team. We couldn't be where we are today in government if we didn't have our team. And losing one of our team members is something that kind of hits our heart, because we don't want that team ever to break up, you know? But we have to move on, and our retirees have to move on, they've been here for many, many years, and I wish you the best of luck, you got a great family, God bless you, I'm sure your wife will love you home. Did you get your honeydew?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yes. You know, when I was eight years old, my father, Christmas gave me this big box, and I thought, wow, what's he given to me? I opened it up, and it was a shoe shine kit. I'm the one that shined all his shoes. And I still have that in a closet, I still have that shoe shiner.
I mean, you could, you could look at your face in his shoes. I mean, they were fabulous, I mean, you know, when you see a well-dressed gentleman and you look down, and my God, the shoes are like impeccable, and I'm like, wow. And Dave's like that, he sees you, but he is, aren't you gonna clean those shoes? I'm like, pardon me? I walked, I walked in the office, it's like, you need to wipe them off a little bit. All right, Dave, I'll go to a shoe shiner. I mean, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll see you in the neighborhood.
It's, it's a dying breed of us that have the wingtip, you know, shoes, that still, still polish them with polish, shoe polish, and, you know, I, my glory was always going to the Cleveland Airport and have Cleveland shines, and I could get it done right, you know, and, and, and they all faded away, that Pittsburgh doesn't have shoe shines anymore, Cleveland does, but they're not there, and I don't go through the airport that often anymore, but, um, yeah, my dad taught me the same thing with shoes, you know, in fact, you know, I was a precinct commitment since, I have been since eighty-six, I believe, and back when you were appointed in the nineties, you know, so, a long time, you know, I've known you and your family, and, you know, I always used, when I, when I was fortunate enough, be elected in Austintown, I used to call Joyce Pogony the first lady of Austintown, 'cause she was such a unique and special person, and whenever I'd run into your mom, you know, I always called Pat the first lady of Mahoning County, you know, because she just had such a way. I mean, you're so right, and, and I think Carol said it, she would, she could talk to you on anything and everything, and when you walked away from her, you always had the, it always made you think, because she brought so much reality and common sense to the equation, you know, just, just great family, great people, and Tony, you have not paled in comparison to your parents. You, you wear your heart on your sleeve all the time, you don't have, you've never had your finger up in the air, you are who you are, you believe what you believe, and you always are defending, whether it's, um, you know, people that have been, you know, disabled or weak or put down or, or something that's happened, you know, you're always the champion of everyone, everyone, you know, whether it's, you know, like Kathy said, with women, with minorities, with everything, you know, that's, and I always am enlightened when I get an opportunity to speak to you, because it always reminds me of who we are, you know, and, and what we are, especially coming from Youngstown, Mahoning County, Mahoning Valley, you know, so, um, you're dearly gonna be missed, you're somebody that, uh, that I've always looked up to, and, and I, and I, I wish that we could brainwash you different on your sports choices, because, you know, that's a little, a little out of, out of line. I, I, I'll go along with the Pirates, 'cause, or I mean with the Tigers, 'cause my father was born in Michigan, and he was, he was a Tigers fan, and, uh, so I'll, I'll give you a little bit of the Tigers, but, and here's, and, and really, here's how honest, true, and real Tony is. I bought season tickets in nineteen ninety-three for the Cleveland Indians, and because they were, you know, the, last year, the old stadium that Jake was opening in ninety-four, so there was a group of five of us, and we all went in and we got, 'cause, you know, if you had tickets in the old stadium, you got first dibs in the new stadium. So I bought those tickets and had them for years and years and years and years, and I would tell Tony, Tony, they're playing the Tigers, do you want the tickets for the Tigers? No, I can't take any tickets for free. I said, well, you can pay me if you want. Nope, nope, I don't wanna have to put it on my ethics report, you know?
That's half, that's the story, 'cause the other half is I would never go up and watch the Guardians.
I haven't watched the Guardians either, but the Indians are different.
Those kind of words, Dave.
Yeah, so.
So you forgive me for all those years that we used to beat your Saxon Club softball team.
Oh, yeah, we played, and, and that, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, Tony was one heck of a baseball player, he was one heck of a softball player, you know, so, and the Steel Valley, yeah, they beat up on us great a bit, but everybody beat on us great a bit, though, you know, you weren't unique, you know?
The food there, the Saxon.
Yeah, yeah, always.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Tony. Anyone else? Pat, can you hear us, you back up there? Okay. All right. With that said, congratulations, and good luck with everything, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Call. Yes.
Commissioner Taffet Canty?
Yes.
Yes.